Call please.
Councilmember Husnick?
Here.
Councilmember Valento?
Here.
Councilmember Erickson?
Here.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
And Mayor Bain?
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And our agenda is approved. Our first item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any parties, we have open forum at every meeting and is any interested parties opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I do, I do note that we do have an appeal this evening on the agenda, which is our first regular agenda item for the Northern Natural Gas Appeal. If you are here to speak on that topic, you're welcome to make a comment now in open forum, or else we will have an opportunity for a public comment period as part of that appeal as well. We will first hear from the appellant. We'll hear from Northern Natural Gas. We'll have an opportunity for any council questions. And then we will, as part of council's consideration, open that up for anybody else that wants to speak. So if you're here to speak on that topic, you're welcome to speak now or on any other topic now, or you could wait until we have the more formal open hearing or public hearing portion of that meeting. Is there anybody that would like to speak as part of open forum? Go ahead. And if you could, please just come to the podium and start with your name and your address for the record, and welcome. We're glad you're here.
Hi, my name's Emily Jelfs. Address 18150 July Ave., Forest Lake. And I'd just like to quick mention, I did just receive this from Abby Whitman about an hour and four minutes ago through an email. She originally addressed me previously stating she'd send them over prior to the meeting. She unfortunately responded back and said that she had forgotten. She's sorry that she had neglected to send them. So unfortunately, I had trusted her word of sending them over and did not know they were public. So I would just ask if me and our neighborhood could have time to look over the notes, as you all did together, before we would proceed with the Northern Natural Gas Appeal.
I understand. And maybe just a quick point of clarification, are we time bound on the appeal? I know the appeal had to be filed within a certain amount of time. Are we time bound to address that this evening? Or if the appellant wanted to postpone that, is that something that we would have discretion to do? I guess question for staff.
Your Honor, Council, you do have the discretion to table the item to the next meeting or, you know, a meeting date specific. Just a point of clarification from a procedural perspective, what is required under the law is notice of the meeting. So the appellant needs to receive a notice that we will be hearing this topic this evening, and that, I believe, is a 10-day notice under the statute and code. That's different from the materials that would be in your council packet. There is no obligation actually to send those materials to the appellant. That's not part of the procedure. That, I'm not weighing in on whether or not they need more time with the materials, just making it clear that under law, that's not the requirement. The requirement is that they have notice of the hearing.
Understood. And notice was given, it's just not the materials, just to be clear.
Yes, that is. And notice was given to the app, um, appellant. Just as a reminder to the council, it's an appellant hearing, not a public hearing, like the planning commission level, so.
Understood. So why don't we, why don't we proceed with the meeting? Give you an opportunity, the appellant an opportunity to decide if you want us to hear that tonight, or if you wanted to approach council and we get to this agenda item and ask for it to be tabled. That's something that I'm open to council considering. And let's, if that's okay, I'd like to proceed in that manner of, let's have that conversation when we get to that agenda item. Okay. With that said, is there anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening on any topic? Please. And could you come to the podium, please?
I feel like I walked into a hornet's nest, so. My subject does nothing to you.
It's not a hornet's nest, it's our city council. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jeff Benson. I live at Jody Avenue North. And I did sign in on the sheet, so you have my full address on there. I've been a resident here for 29 years. I only, two subjects I wanted to mention and then two questions I wanted to ask. The first one I wanted to mention was, I just, I've been thinking about bringing this up for a long time, but in my, in the years when I first got here, we had, the Washington County Sheriff was the police department to cover the old township where I live now. And honestly, I used to see the county sheriff driving to the neighborhood at least once a week. But I gotta tell you, in the last two years, I have yet to see a Forest Lake police car come through my neighborhood. They never patrol out there. I mean, I just feel like I'm paying a lot of money for a police department and I don't get any service. Not that I'm calling them for service, but they should at least be patrolling in my neighborhood. And I never seen anybody out there. I've seen them drive down like 202nd Street and they, they go down to about Harrow Avenue or so, and then they turn and they head back into town. Nobody goes all the way out to Jody Avenue. The second one is, my neighborhood, after it was the township, the city annexed them, we were all, we were all assessed thousands of dollars to block top our gravel road. And we're only talking three blocks in my neighborhood. But we've paid for the money on the promise from the city council at that time that the road would be maintained, that we had to pay one time only and it be maintained. Well, the road is falling apart. I mean, it is everywhere. I mean, it's just breaking up, it's falling apart. I, I contacted Mr. Adams last year and I said, are you gonna, is somebody gonna fix this road? And his short answer was no. And then he sent me a map of, I don't know, something, I don't know what it was called. Some Michigan map, you know, that said, this is the roads that be repaired or whatever. I don't know what they mean. All I wanted was to be patched. I didn't say they had to replace the road, I just wanted it patched. And he said, no. They did come out late in the fall and they put down some cold patch in two places, which within a month, it all broke up and it was gone. And this, this year, I'm driving around the city of Forest Lake and I'm seeing hot patches on all the roads in the city of Forest Lake. Yet out where I live, nobody's, nobody's been out there to do anything. And the road is falling apart. And I want to get it fixed. That's all I'm asking for. What, what does it take to get somebody to come out to do a hot patch? That's what I want to know. I've asked, I've asked again this year and I was told the same thing, no. So that was, that's my two comments and my two questions, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Can somebody get back to Mr. Benson? We can pass on some information?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So anybody else that would like to speak in open forum this evening? All right. Seeing that, we'll bring the agenda back to council. Council for your consideration tonight is consent agenda items 6A through 6K. And looking for a motion or any changes to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through K.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And motion carries. All right, we are moving on to our regular agenda and our first item this evening is item 7A, the Northern Natural Gas Appeal. Maybe given the feedback that we heard as part of open forum, typically we would start with council presentation of the appeal facts and then we would move into the actual hearing from the appellant. I guess maybe I would ask the appellant if they're requesting this to be tabled to a future meeting. I know we're kind of making a decision on the fly here, but I want you to feel prepared and I want you to, I think it would be a goal for everybody for, to have a good appeal. And if, if delaying that until our next regular council meeting provides for that timeline, I'd rather give for that timeline. There is an active project that is being considered that has, you know, been conditioned, or has been approved by our planning commission, so this is the appeal to that approval. It's more important to me that we get this right. And I guess if the appellant is requesting a extension, I'm happy to hear that. But I'd like to hear from the appellant if you would approach the podium.
All right. So it sounds like because it was previously approved, it's already being granted? And the more that we would wait for us as a neighborhood to collectively come to a decision, there would still be ongoing work? Is that correct?
I'm not sure if the project has actually started or, I guess maybe the question would be to ask staff, do, are we aware of any project impact of, of postponing an appeal hearing? Is there any activity that we would know? And maybe it's unknown to us if there are activities that would be delayed? Is that a third question?
I would defer to legal counsel whether or not this is subject to the 60-day rule. We just have to double check our 60-day timeline. As a reminder, the CUP is for the work that's in the floodplain. So any work that's outside of the floodplain isn't permitted by the city, of the city of Forest Lake. And so therefore, we wouldn't, this, these actions wouldn't prevent other work from occurring in those areas.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So it sounds like there's no knowledge to any of you of, like, a timeframe for boring through the lake? Would that be right?
Boring through the lake cannot occur in, without us conditionally.
All right. I'm just making sure that it wasn't still, like, technically approved and that if the appeal had actually hindered it.
It was approved, but the appeal stopped the approval.
Okay. All right. So is there a timeline of our appeal, like, days or date-wise that we would need to make, like accommodate a deadline before it expires and it would render us as, like, basically forfeiting?
Amanda, is that something you would?
Counsel, so in a situation like this, 15, the statute is 1599, that talks about 60-day clocks for certain zoning approvals. It is silent on appeals for those approvals. There is some KSI. I don't have it in front of me and I don't like to do math at the table. But if my memory serves, there is some, like, kind of stopping of the clock for an appeal, but that's generally when you have, you're appealing a denial in a situation where you've, you're appealing an approval, so there is a approval. I think that there's some, if I recall, I believe the KSI is a little more gray about that. So I would want to investigate. What we could potentially do is, you can do an extension to the 60-day clock, so you have 60 days to approve most zoning things. But you are able, as a city, to request an additional 60 days if necessary for a variety of reasons. You know, we've done it before and this would obviously be one of those types of situations where we may need to do that. Just not sure right now exactly procedurally what that would look like.
Madam Mayor, if I may just add to that, the appeals were made the 16th and 17th of May, so we would, we're still well within the 60-day timeline. Your July 10th meeting date would also fall within that timeline.
So ultimately, to the, I guess to the appellant, this is your appeal. And so I want this very much to be your decision. We're happy to hear the appeal tonight, if you want to do tonight. It does sound like you are, we are within our 60-day timeline to hear an appeal on our July 10th meeting. And so if you wanted to, us to table this this evening and come back on July 10th, there is a path for you to do so. But most importantly, I want it to be your decision because it is your appeal.
All right. One last question. You'd mentioned this is an opportunity for Richard and I to present. Does that mean that there are very few, or if not any, that have not already read or seen any of the graphs or the body of the appeals in its entity?
So I can speak to our, I can speak a little bit maybe to our packet process. So the packet of information that you just received was sent to council on Thursday evening. It is between Thursday evening and tonight that council has an opportunity to review that packet and review information. I'm not going to attest that everybody has read every word of that packet, but the packet was presented to us on Thursday. And also part of that packet is the reference to the planning commission meetings. And so personally, I've watched that planning commission meeting. Can't speak to if everyone has, but there has been opportunity to, for, for us to get up to speed. But again, it's your appeal and so it's your presentation of the information that tonight, that is your opportunity to present however you want to present that information to us. Your appeal that's in the packet is very thorough and so I personally appreciated that. But if you, again, this is your time. And so I, I want you to feel like you've got the opportunity to present the information that's important to you.
Yes, and I'd like to, the entirety of it. That's why I just, I didn't want to read something off from the appeal.
Understood.
Like the whole thing, if you guys had or hadn't already kind of gone through it.
Absolutely went through it.
Yeah. So we've, we've seen, had an opportunity to review that whole packet.
Sorry, I just asked because I never did receive back the last signing of the page that you guys had all read it.
Included in the packets were requests for signatures that you'd received, the packet and the planning commission had received the packets. Steph didn't seek out those signatures out of any of the members of the body.
Yeah. That's just all I asked, was just to make sure.
Typically not a process we would follow. We can kind of commit to when the information's available, but it'd be really unusual for us to, like, attest that we've reviewed the packet at a certain timeline. I appreciate you asking. It'd be an unusual response for us.
Before I make a decision on the spur of the moment.
Understood.
I'd just like to, like, thoroughly ask any questions, you know, to prohibit any hindrance. But it sounds like I should probably read the entire packet, just to make sure.
Go ahead.
Your Honor, if I, if I may, just, so the, the appeal is the applicant's appeal. The city staff is not appealing anything. The applicant himself is not appealing something. This is the, the, as I understand, it's neighbors or, like, somewhat some, you know, local neighborhood. And so in your packet, what is in those documents, and I know that you've read them, but I'm mostly sharing it for the public, is a summary of what happened at the planning commission meeting. Absolutely no opinion offered on what happened at the planning commission meeting. I wrote the memo and the memo is 100% just me re, just regurgitating what planning commission already determined and then helping you just track, here's the laws, here's the rules in the city code that, that cover a CUP and here's the criteria that you look at. The memo does not ever suggest that you vote one way or the other on this appeal because it is not our burden, it is the appellant's burden. And then I believe there's about 160 pages of documents from the two appellant's, both, Richard, sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Jelfs.
Jelfs, thank you. Mr. Jelfs and Ms. Jelfs, all of their documents are in the packet as well. And so that is sort of the persuasive information or the, you know, the argument essentially, right? Putting forth the argument as to why the planning commission may have gotten it wrong on the CUP. I'm not suggesting that they got it wrong. That's what the appellant is here tonight to argue. Even if they didn't argue a single word tonight, every single word in the packet is already on the public record as, for this appeal. So from the perspective, I guess, of where the appellant sit, they, there isn't anything in that packet that frankly, they need to know because it's already stuff that they either provided, or it's just a summary of what they would have already seen at the planning commission meeting. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, yes. I, I think also, just point of clarification, that the information that is part of the appeal has, is already in the packet and has been provided. The opportunity to speak and address council is to summarize that information, to have a discussion of those points. We're not expecting you to read every word of the appeal or to, there's, there's a lot of information. So typically, the appeal is more of a summary of key points and then a discussion of council and opportunity to address questions or more of a summary of what's already in the packet. But again, I appreciate that you were expecting something earlier than what was delivered and I just want to make sure that you have time to be prepared.
All right. So I'm mainly concerned of the rest of the neighborhood that wasn't able to make it this evening. Because it is an entire neighborhood and not just my life that would be jeopardized, I feel that it would just be me looking out for them as well, as I have through the whole process, just to make sure that we all collectively, you know, have an input or can, you know, talk about this. Because there are multiple lives on the line that could be jeopardized by a decision that you all make this evening. So I would just like to maybe postpone it to July 10th. Make sure that all the lives would be accounted for with being voiced.
Understood. So with that information, Council, I would move that council table this agenda item until our July 10th meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. There is not a discussion on a table item and so we will call the vote. Is there, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And this item is tabled until July 10th. Thank you for being here this evening. And also, staff can be, if you have questions between now and then, staff can be of assistance if you have other questions about how July 10th might, what that might look like.
Mayor Bain, may I also?
Yes, please.
May I just note that no new materials would be presented for the July 10th meeting. It would just be the exact same materials that are in your packet this evening.
That is a great point of clarification. So the information that'll be in council's packet is going to be the same as July 10th? What the applicant wants to, what you want to tell us on July 10th, certainly between now and then, that is, that is your plan to put together. But the information that you see now is complete and that is what we will be using as a point of reference for the 10th meeting. I think you may have had a follow-up question. You could, just so we can hear you, go to the podium. Thank you.
Richard Jelfs of 1815 July Ave., Forest Lake. Just ask now, you know, if you guys haven't, between now and then, do take the time and read through our appeals. It's going to summarize obviously our points. So the time's available now and I feel like that would allow everyone to come prepared. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Okay. Council, moving to our next agenda item is 7B, the 2023 to 2027 draft agreement for the Lake Center for Youth and Families. And Council, I believe the version that's in your packet may have been updated with a more recent version that was just passed. And Patrick, we'll let you take this.
Yes, if you, the council recalls, the executive director of the Lake Center for Youth and Family came and asking for funding, as they usually do on an annual basis. It was the council's desire that we enter into a longer-term agreement. After a follow-up conversation with the Lake Center Youth and Family Director, she also noted, talked to me about the struggles that they're having in getting their grant funding. It's starting, their grant funding is starting to fall away. And the, the need for them for funding, additional funding is greater than it even was when she presented her case to you earlier. So being that the council asked for a five-year agreement and speaking with Linda about what kind of funding this, it should take, I've enclosed a funding that calls for an increase this year to $30,000. It's up from the $17,000 that we have funded them since, I think it was 2008, I believe was the, it's been studied that long. And then an increase annually to try to, to have them keep up with what they need to do with, with the potential loss of future grants money. And it caps out at $55,000 in 2027. There's, the big jumps are between 23 and 24 and 25. And then it's just a modest increase after that. We're trying to get them to a sustainable where we hit about 3% or approximately 3% to 5% every year. So that was the, the goal of this type of function. And I believe the budget can afford to take this, especially reflecting on the services that they provide.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, questions for Patrick? Thoughts on the agreement? Again, I think the most notable, notable change from our prior year is really the amount. I, just some thoughts, you know, this is a contract that has seen very little change over many, many years. You know, we are, we were made aware of just the, kind of the current funding situation that this Lake Center for Youth and Families is in. Their grant funding becoming less and less stable is concerning. I think we should, as a city, need to be a foundational support. If they didn't exist, we would want them to exist. This is the kind of alternative, I almost said dispute resolution. It's not really dispute resolution, but the, kind of the alternative path that we, I think, want young people to have in our community. And so I just think, you know, us doing our part by having a substantial increase is important. And, you know, moving to a five-year agreement gives them some stability. So I'm happy to support this, but also very open to feedback on what is the right amount? What's the right pace of growth? You know, what should our, you know, size of our impact be to this organization, so.
I know we talked about this earlier, I just couldn't remember exactly what we talked about for numbers at that time. Could you refresh my memory, Patrick?
The numbers, we started, initially, we started talking about 25,000.
That's the number.
Going from 17. And, and that was a reaction, again, as well, to that the 17,000 had been in place for quite a long time. And I believe the number is 28, 2008 was the last time, I think. Either that or 12. But one, but quite a long, so. And then, once we put that into place, I talked to Linda again and she had some concerns about recent information about grant funding that they're having trouble with and that she expects to have fall off. And just the continuing struggle of any nonprofit to continue their funding through grants, it's, it's a big job for any nonprofit to do that. And based on that and the work that they do and the council seemed very positive about the work that this organization does for the community and that the majority of the, their clientele are Forest Lake residents, this seemed to be an appropriate number without going too crazy and without really impacting the budget substantially. And it gives us time to, to slowly go up to a funding level that seems to be appropriate.
Yeah, I'd certainly support. And this is a general fund thing?
It's, it's a general fund, yes.
Yeah, okay.
General fund and is it specific police budget? Is that where it lands?
I think it's its own budget item.
Is it its own?
Yes, it's, it's in its own.
Public, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Patrick, so in that conversation you just recently had with her, is she concerned with what's changed since she presented that this might not be enough then? Or what was there?
No, she's actually satisfied with this portion. It was, it was, you know, going from 17,000 to 25,000, not that great of an increase based on, A, again, the history of how long we've been funding this, but services and everything else and the grant funding. So I think she was very happy to see, she understands budgeting, she understands the process, that we can't just jump from 17 to 55,000. So by doing it this way, it, it kills basically two birds with one stone. It gives you a five-year agreement that we don't have to come back and, and it gives her the ability to better budget and know that those are going to be the funds. And then also, it slowly increases from the, from the 35,000 up to the 25. So you, as the city, as the city doesn't have an immediate huge jump in the budget, so.
I had an opportunity to speak with Linda on this and she also mentioned that although we're the largest, you know, city that is served, they do receive funding from other cities as well and cities tend to move in packs. And so part of us making this five-year commitment also provides her just a little bit of additional information to bring back to some other comparison communities that might help overall, which was part of why having some five-year commitment was helpful.
I think, I think it would help us all too, just, you know, I'm in support of this, don't get me wrong. I think it just would really help us all too to look at their budget, you know, see what, where are we spending the money and, and what the total budget is. And those are pretty simple things, I would think.
Yeah. And the nice thing about this is it's a local agency where local money's going to go to. It's not giving money to some countywide or statewide organization. It's really a one-on-one local. And that's, I think that's really the nice thing about this particular organization and this particular funding is that it stays, it's from the community and stays in the community for the most part.
I know that they've done a lot of good in this city, there's no question about that.
From all reports that I have, they are a tremendous organization and a very well-run organization.
Any other questions or anybody ready to make a motion for, on this item?
We have the verbiage. I'd make a motion that we go forward with the FY 2023 to FY 2027 contribution agreement with, between the city of Forest Lake and the Lake Center for Youth and Families.
One second.
Motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Great, that is the end of our planned regular agenda this evening. And we can move into staff updates and we'll start with Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Maine, I don't have any updates at this time. But I have to answer any questions?
Dan?
The only update I have is that this is my last council meeting with the City of Forest Lake. Do want to thank counsel for all the opportunities you guys have given me over the past nine and a half years. It's definitely bittersweet leaving Forest Lake. I do have a few days left, so I'm, I hear officially through July 5th, but this is my last official council meeting. So again, thank you for all the opportunities over the past nine and a half years.
Thank you, Dan. It's been great, great working with you and best of luck in Lindstrom. And we really appreciate all of the dedication and hard work you've done. Much appreciated, good luck.
Thanks.
Or look, I should say we look forward to working with you in your capacity in Lindstrom, right?
I was going to say, it's not that far down Highway 8, so there's some, there's going to be some overlap that happens.
Paths will cross, for sure. All right, Abby?
I just wanted to note that with Arts in the Park in full swing, we are, it is appearing that we're having some higher-than-average attendance each week, even some of those lesser-known bands. It just seems like a lot more people are coming out to the park to listen to music. So, other than that, I don't have any other updates.
Thank you, Abby. Patrick?
I have a few things I would actually like to thank Dan for him, for he making my job a lot easier than it was, especially one of my first couple of years here. I think Lindstrom is very fortunate to get him and I'm sure he'll be a great success there. Second is I attended the Minnesota League Conference last week, trying to, like everyone else, catch up on all the new legislation, things like that. So we've got a little more information on funding and things like that. Not any information yet on any of the cannabis bills because they're still working on those. And I do have a question for the counsel. The Chamber golf outing is July 24th, which is a council meeting night. And I know there are participants both on counsel and staff that go to that golf outing and wondering if we still should have a meeting on the 24th or change it to a different date like Tuesday?
I feel like we have precedent here and I feel like precedent has, I think, we have changed that, we've either canceled the meeting or we have changed it to Tuesday. If we change it to Tuesday, is that just get noticed as a special meeting instead and we put some advance notice out if we're going to do that now?
Yes, correct.
And we have, and that is all, that is not an EDA night in that, EDAs typically meeting the first Monday? Or the, the first meeting, second Monday of, of the month. My preference would, I guess, on the fly, would be to move that meeting to be the 20, Tuesday, the 25th? Is that concurrence? If we happen to be in a series of light agenda evening, you know, certainly that's something we could consider, but I'd rather us at least have a meeting noted for the 25th. We have had very few meetings lately where it's that light of an agenda. So let's plan for the 25th.
We will plan for the 25th and if it's a very light agenda, possibly cancel the meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you, that's all I have.
And Karen, could you start including that in the weekly newsletter? All right, excellent.
And red letters.
I know you guys love all my notifications I send you. Thank you, we're predictable.
Amanda? No updates, all right. Dave? Ryan?
Mayor, City Council, just want to put it on your radar that we're looking at scheduling next public outreach meeting for County-Stated Highway 32 or 11th Avenue, August 21st. So that'd be before your City Council workshop that night from 4:30 to 6:30. So we're looking at that as our next public engagement meeting for County-Stated Highway 32, August 21st.
And that would be before a workshop? Is that, and that typically is invite sent to adjoining property owners?
Yep, they'll do the same process that they had before. Mailers, social media, working with the city and our social media platform too.
Perfect. And that's 11th Avenue?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Chief Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, good evening. We held our Forest Lake Safety Camp since our last city council meeting and it was well-received and went off without a hitch. And I want to thank all the businesses, the donors and supporters and volunteers that assist with that great event. We're gearing up for the July 4th celebration and festivities and we're ready for that. So we're excited about a safe and successful event this year. And last Friday, Forest Lake Police Officers and some family members participated in the Special Olympics Minnesota Law Enforcement Torch Run. It was fun seeing people out there, there were a few people cheering us on coming through town. So that's always an exciting event and supporting Special Olympics. And that's all I have for you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. And Kevin?
No updates from Finance.
All right. Let's move to counsel updates, we'll start with counsel member Roberts.
No updates today.
Counsel member Valento?
Just want to say that Dan, you will be missed. I appreciated you a lot when I first started, especially with Cable Commission. You gave great information and it is definitely bittersweet, but you'll do great in Lindstrom. And hopefully we'll see you soon.
Yeah, I'll be around.
Counsel member Husnick?
Same thing, I have no other updates except to thanks Dan for all the years he's been here, plus working with the Airport Commission and that kind of thing too. So it's been a kind of a double thing for me, so. Thanks for all these years, Dan, we might even pop in on you over there and make sure you're doing okay.
You gotta keep me in line, you gotta keep me in line, Sam.
Counsel member Husnick doesn't have enough city meetings to attend. Counsel member Erickson?
Yeah, I just echo that, I've sure enjoyed working with you these last few years, Dan, appreciate it.
I, just a quick update for me. I know we have a couple of commission positions that are open. Having a conversation actually right now with, kind of what does that, both the appointment process and the onboarding process look like? And kind of what should be the right timing for that? Abby in particular has had some great feedback around how that appointment process and also just follow-up on the onboarding, some suggestions for improvement. That doesn't necessarily prevent us from moving forward with some of those appointments. In particular, we still have an open position on the EDA. We also have an open position on the Planning Commission that recently opened up. And we still have the ongoing discussion about what we are doing with the Park Commission. Park Commission is a little bit of a, you know, different animal in that it is an entirely new group and reappointed. There are some park policy things that we're discussing and may potentially getting kind of started on before we may want to do a full appointment. And then also I'm really looking forward to some counsel feedback, probably in July, when we start to see updates of the 10-year plan and just have a little bit more discussion on where are we with budget in particular to the Park Board or in Park Commission? I can't say Park Board, Park Commission. So just, I want to acknowledge that those are still open and kind of each taking its own trajectory. But again, want to acknowledge it, it's just not forgotten. Also, Dan, again, many, many thanks and good luck to you. And also just a great opportunity to wish everyone a great 4th of July. Many thanks to the Legion, they do hours and hours and hours of work prior to this event. It's also a significant event for all of our city staff. So just look forward to always, it's a fun, great weekend in Forest Lake. So have a great, safe 4th of July and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.